School committee meeting of the North Andover School Committee. It is 7:01 at the 15th of April, the 15th of April 2021. My name is Helen Picard. I'm chair of the committee and I am calling this meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. When you take your seat, I would ask you to please silence your devices and remind you that this meeting is being recorded. I am going to read the governor's order about open meeting law pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing a strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover School Committee may be conducted via remote participation by some or all committee members and staff. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. This meeting, for this meeting, members of the public who wish to hear the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast 99 or Verizon 28 or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the school department website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible. Again, silence for devices. This meeting is being recorded and we'll start with roll call and all our votes this evening will take place by roll call. So I'll start with the members and then I will pass it over to Dr. Gilligan, who can introduce his team and we have some guests. So do we have Ms. Vitski?
Yes.
And Ms. Pytrawski?
Yes.
And Mr. McDevitt?
Present.
And Ms. Mabley?
Here.
And again, North Andover Cam, I am not hearing folks well. I think I have my, my volume turned up here. I'll keep messing with it and see if I can get it better. And Dr. Gilligan, if you can introduce your, your team, please.
Great. Dr. Gilligan, I'm here and I've got tonight as part of recognition, a longtime STEM teacher from North Andover High School, Mr. Motherway, Mike Motherway.
If you can respond affirmatively that you're present.
Well, hi, I'm here. I just forgot I had to turn my mic back. Thank you.
And I'm not sure if Harris Karamanovich is here tonight?
I don't see him on the list of attending.
So maybe not yet. And then we have Ms. Marks, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
Here.
And Ms. Marks, do you want to introduce who you have with, who you, who's with us tonight? From your team and our team?
Carl Larkome, our STEM Director is here tonight. Principal Raymond from the Thompson School is here. Principal Leahy from the Sergeant School and Principal O'Laughlin from the Atkinson School. Mr. Clark had a prior engagement, so he has supplied us with a video. And unfortunately, Mr. Cushing had a last minute emergency, so he is not here this evening.
And then our student representatives. Aiman?
Here.
All right. Mika?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
And Lindsay?
Here.
All right. Did we hit everyone on the call tonight? And we, did we miss anyone?
I think you're good, Dr. Gilligan.
All right, great.
Okay, so our first order of business is public comment and we have none tonight, so we're moving right into the recognition and that's right back to you, Dr. Gilligan.
Oh, all right. So it's great to have Mr. Motherway here. Not only is he a longtime STEM teacher here at North Andover Public Schools, but he's also the coach of our VEX robotics teams. And tonight we're here to recognize Schneider Electric and in particular Susan Nobley. She has been working for years to get grant money each and every year to support our VEX robotic competitions for our middle school and high school students. As many of you may know, the VEX robotics, and we're going to play a video to show you a little bit about it, it's been an award-winning program. Up until recently, they've been traveling and have made the Nationals and I can maybe have Mr. Motherway elaborate a little bit more on that. But again, Susan Nobley, who's been working for Snyder for years, each and every year has got a grant to support these teams. And in the time that Susan Nobley has been doing this since 2017, each and every year they've raised $35,000 in total. I mean donated $35,000 in total. So we're just can't thank her enough for her efforts and dedication and Snyder Electric, you know, for lending her to do this work. We are excited that we have a, you know, a former parent had kids go through our system, that she was able to convince to take her spot going forward. Harris, and I apologize Harris if I get your last name wrong. It's a long one. Karamedovit, Karame-Medovich. So Harris is not here, but we're really looking forward to working with him. And I will ask Mr. Motherway to say a few words before I switch over to a video from the kids about our VEX robotics and the program.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to have, to recognize Snyder Electric and to have me on. So I've been teaching at the high school since 2005 and we've slowly grown the program and part of, part of growing the program and strengthening it is partly funding and partly getting expertise from the local community to help steer the kids in a knowledgeable direction. So that's where the Snyder Electric grants really been helpful. It's a participation grant, so they were able to, to fund upgrading and purchasing more equipment beyond what the, the school budget provides. So it's, it's both funds kind of go under the pie to make that work. But then the, the engineers come and they, and they act as judges and field reps and give feedback to the students and feedback to me. And I've been called aside more than once to give me some good tips for how to improve for next year. You know, and Harris is one of those people that, that does that. So it's really, it's a nice partnership with the, with the community that, that can help with that. Just the video will show you one of the teams, one of the teams, the seniors this year and they, they last year were very prepared to go to regionals and try to climb the ladder and to go in the Worlds. And the day we went home, March 13th was the day before regionals started. So like, so that group of kids that you see in the video, I feel for because they missed the opportunity for that. If you see the banners behind me, those are banners from the six years in a row that we did advance to the championships in Kentucky. And you know, and that, that comes from the kids' plan and they learn the game rules and learn about some of the mechanics and design and computer programming. And then they have to build and test their solution. And we have our three design cycles through the, through the season. And hopefully we have teams that come back every year and then climb the, climb the ranks and do well. One of the things that I, I see as a success is every year when we run the tournaments, the tournaments are run by mostly graduates from the program or returning engineers. Snyder comes back, Stan Limbert comes back, Dan Brosnan and Mark Svensson graduated in 2005, 2006. There's, there's a bunch of them and if you, if you're able to come to one of the events, you can see a bunch of grads. And also kudos to Mrs. Hurst, who runs the tournaments every year. So I think that's, maybe if anybody has questions, you're always welcome to contact me or come over. Or you can ask me now or Mr. Gilli, if you would like to show the video. I think that would probably be a, a good watch for a minute.
Absolutely. So I'm going to just switch screens. So we hit this here.
And after the video, we'll have a go around so that the members can ask any questions.
Sure.
And while they get that set up, I'll put a plug. If you have younger kids, it's a great opportunity to get into the high school and see what older kids are doing and gets those younger kids excited because we do have the programs, their community programs, I believe as well, and gets them all prepped. It's just a terrific experience, all ages.
Great, so here we go.
Greetings. Welcome to North Andover High School Robotics. Sit back, relax and become enthralled by the ins and outs of what we do.
As a builder, I research, brainstorm and choose the best design for our robot. We do things like drilling, sawing and even 3D printing, all to create a robot up to the task of crushing its enemies.
If you're interested in coding and you don't know where to start, this is the best place to get some hands-on experience because you can actually physically see what your robot is doing.
It's super important to document the design and theory of your robot as it evolves. The notebook allows you to look back on your development and reference old designs. Doing the notebook is the true engineering process.
I do these three easy tasks. You could get good enough to compete at VEX Worlds. At least one team from our school qualifies every year, so give it a shot and it could be you. So join, it's a lot of fun. It's awesome.
All right. So a big thanks again to Snyder Electric Foundation and to Suzanne Nobley for all the dedication and not only with the funding to North Andover, but also rounding up engineers that do all this work. So we look forward to Harris coming aboard and thank you, Mr. Motherway, as always. Thrilled to be able to show off the program and thanks for coming on tonight.
So let's have a quick go around with our membership and see if anybody has questions or comments and I'll start with Ms. Vitski.
No questions. I just think that's great. Thank you Suzanne for that grant and a great video. And I always enjoy watching the competitions.
Thank you. And Ms. Pytrawski?
I don't have any questions. Just thank you for all you do. It's a great program.
And Mr. McDevitt?
Great program again. My only question is, is there any possibility for like virtual competitions? Or is that really not possible?
They did hold some virtual competitions this year. Part of our challenge was getting enough in-person time to develop a competitive robot. So there were some teams that did and some of them were home teams that worked in the basement with two or three kids. Not as, not as many school teams were able to do that. I do have a, the team that made the video do come after school on Mondays for a few hours and are working on their VEX AI, artificial intelligence robot. We got in a pilot program this year and they are here diligently working, trying to get their robot completed. And, and there is a competition in June where, and looking to see if there's a virtual component to that.
Awesome. Great. Good luck.
Thank you. And Ms. Mabley?
Thank you very much. And I thought, I think the students did a fantastic marketing video there for recruiting more members for next year. So well done.
Yeah, that started, I, Mr. Nugent asked for some advertisement for the clubs and I jokingly poked at them to ask when their video would be done and they had no idea that one was even being requested. So then they, behind the scenes, brought it together.
It's outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah, the teamwork is amazing. I have two kids that dabbled in your program and both of them studied science post-secondary. So the teamwork aspect is really terrific, you know, the, the social aspects of it. And, you know, thank you for everything you're doing. I hope you keep having fun. It seems, you always seem like you're having fun and I think that helps a great deal. And a big, a big thank you to Snyder Electric and Suzanne Nobley and her replacement, whose last name I can't yet remember, but I'll get it. So Mr. Motherway, you are welcome to stay with us, but you are also welcome to move on and prepare for tomorrow or relax or whatever one does in the evening.
Yeah, no, I'm in, I'm in the lab now so I can show off the banners, but I'm going to head home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations on your successes.
Thank you.
So we are on to the consent agenda and we have the minutes from 4:1 in the packet and I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented in the packet. So moved?
Second.
So moved by Ms. Mabley, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? And a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Vitski Lynch?
Yes.
Ms. Pytrawski?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
And the Chair abstains. I was not with you. So that is 4-0 in favor with one abstention. And we're on to the student report. Who's up first?
Thank you, Mrs. Picard. The first item on our agenda to talk about is that the North Andover High School choirs, all three of them, Concert Choir, Trouble Choir, Annie Scarlet and Black Singers, just held two very successful concerts, one Tuesday night and one Wednesday night. People were properly socially distanced at the event. Various parents and relatives could attend. It was in the courtyard of the high school and people were very excited for it. As well, there was a live stream and videos taken. I believe they are on Facebook. Very successful and it's nice that the choirs could, this time.
North Andover was also recognized to be the best community for education by the North, the National Association of Music Merchants. So congratulations to the high school's band and chorus department as they've been working hard all throughout this year.
In addition, the North Andover High School Model United Nations attended its last big conference of the year at Lowell. There were a few high schools there and North Andover participants did very well and received several awards from committee. So that is very good for North Andover Model UN.
Additionally, I may assume is the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils had their virtual state conference this past weekend as well. So typically that's the conference that students attend in Hyannis in March, but this year, of course, it was virtual, so it took place over the weekend. And students got to attend workshops and keynotes, particularly focusing on the rebuilding of school spirit and community culture as we go into the next year.
The Thousand Paper Crane fundraiser by the Asian Pacific Islander Club at North Andover has raised $575 compared to their $200 amount that they were expecting and it's still ongoing throughout the month.
In addition, the Armory, the student-run North Andover High School merchandise store is selling North Andover general apparel from 10% off from now through this Saturday.
That the Interact, Interact is holding is planting trees on April 24th and they're looking for volunteers currently. The Muslim Student Association is also observing Ramadan, so happy Ramadan to everyone that is currently celebrating as well as they will be holding announcements, talking about Islamic history throughout the month and they have decorations up at the school. So please check them out.
Academically, many students are beginning to prepare and get ready for the AP exams. Those are coming up in the beginning of May and then this year they'll be taken in person. Additionally, moving into sports, Unified Basketball, which is a part of our Special Olympics program, celebrated their senior day, recognizing their senior athletes earlier this week.
And following along with that theme of sports, as you all know, the Fall Two floater season this year is winding down. I believe it ends on the 24th. And with that, we've seen the boys and girls indoor track teams finish out their seasons yesterday undefeated with victories against Andover. So that's always great to celebrate. Additionally, the Varsity Football Team is 1-3, but they still have two games left to play in their season. The Varsity Cheer Team is 1-3 with two competitions remaining in their season. And then as Fall Two winds down, transitions immediately into the spring season, which is beginning on the 26th of April, which is right after April vacation. And this spring season will include this year, baseball, softball, boys and girls outdoor track, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls tennis, boys volleyball, winter cheer and wrestling. So that's all we have for you tonight and we'll take any questions that you may have.
All right, we'll have the go around. Ms. Vitski Lynch?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Ms. Pytrawski?
No questions. You guys do a great job though. Thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
Great job and I think that may be the longest we've ever gone without Aiman speaking. So that was good. Good job, guys.
And Ms. Mabley?
Thank you very much and I, I'm thrilled that the floater season, which was obviously a, a hope in the fall, but it was floated, that it worked out. And I think that's outstanding and I'm thrilled that all the athletes got to participate in their sport.
Great. And we wish everybody luck on those AP exams and all the other endeavors that you're continuing this spring. I would mention that the Interact Club did invite school committee members to be present on April 24th at 11 o'clock at North Andover High School, where they're going to have a little presentation and talk about planting seeds of positivity, which is our BRC, Building Respectful Communities Raise theme. So that's exciting. Thank you guys for bringing that up. So you all are free to go and welcome to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So we're on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report and we will go straight to you, Dr. Gilligan.
Great. Thank you. It's been awesome. A little update on returning to school. It was great to get the elementary kids back in on April 5th. I can't tell you how awesome it was to go around to the different schools and see how excited the kids were and to connect with their friends. And I, I was, had the good fortune of being in one school and a student had been for the first time in over 400 days out of their house, you know, back to school. They had an OLA teacher and they loved the OLA teacher. So although they hadn't gone out, they made the decision to come back. So it was great to see students having that much joy and the enthusiasm by the teachers. And I appreciate all the hard work by the staff, really putting it together. It's pretty complex and that goes from all the teachers and staff and principals, but really huge kudos to Erica Murphy and the, and the food folks and also our custodians did remarkable work. So pretty excited about that. As you know, we have high school, middle school coming back after break on April 28th and I'll talk about that in a minute. And high school returning the following day on April, Thursday, April 29th. So last week, I'm going to come back to the middle school and high school, but last week we sent out a survey to blast it out to everyone in the community. The town manager also promoted it too as well on our subcommittee for renovating and restructuring survey for the subcommittee that, on facilities as we look to potentially expand and/or build as part of the town's facility master plans two. So the survey is right directly. You can find it right on our homepage. It's actually in the news or that's the top item. And there's also a dedicated page, website for this information, the survey, collecting questions and they'll be coming back. So I forgot to ask Dr. Mealy, how many people have taken the survey to date? I was dying to know. So maybe he's listening in. He's not here this evening. They can get us that information. So pretty excited about that. We had our teacher vaccinations this past Saturday, was the second round. We had over 325 staff members vaccinated at Greater Lawrence Family Health. And just so thankful to, again, Richie Napolitano, the director, the senior vice president at Greater Lawrence Family Health. Just awesome job. And it was great. And we were able to open school Monday. I got a little worried with the shots being on Saturday. I know some school districts, people have had reactions and they had to close a few districts on the Monday. And I can tell you that I got my shot and it was about 12 hours. I didn't feel great, but I was just thrilled to be able to, to get it. Speaking of shots, you know, our health department and Cheryl Bazak have sent out information, but they'll be sending out more information. Starting, I believe it's April 19th, students will be able to, 16 and above will have the opportunity to be vaccinated here in the Commonwealth. And I think to date, we roughly have about 140 students that have vaccinated at our, in our high school. So, you know, right now there's two of the vaccines. You have to be 18 years old and then there's one where you can be 16 or 17. So we'll continue to send out information about that. For folks who, you know, it's voluntary information. It's so that they have it if they're interested in, in getting something like that. And then I am going, I want to talk just a little bit about, and Ms. Picard, I'm now going to share my screen. All right. So.
Gilligan, I don't have an update, but in the first two hours, we had 244 responses to the survey.
Wow. Yeah, I mean, I think the only survey, I, I heard that there were, they were coming in fast and furious. I think the only survey that people responded even quicker was the one about returning to school. I think, I think there were like 600 and something responses within two hours.
Holly, do you know a due date for that survey? Is there a cutoff?
I don't think we said a cutoff.
Okay. All right. But the sooner the better, right?
All right, Ms. Picard, you make this look easy every week. So hold on, I am working two computers here tonight. So I'm going to present now.
So yeah, we're having all kinds of learning about synchronous and asynchronous and live streaming and the full nine yards. We're doing it all tonight.
Usually Jim runs the show with that.
All right. And look at that. All right, just a, you know, a quick update on 6 through 12 and in-person learning and the student return to full in-person. April 28th and April 29th, we're really excited to have particularly the break for our custodial staff and the operations and Dr. Mealy to really move furniture, get things set up. But in terms of classes, I'm going to talk about that tonight. OLA, I think sometimes people forget thinking OLA. We probably have about 10% home across the district and, you know, they'll be going to five days a week in-person learning. I mean with synchronous learning. A little bit about the food. I know that we blasted out information last week about the MOA for all students and parents, grade six through 12. And Mr. Jackson and Mr. Goncalves continue to be on a blitz of sending more information as it becomes available and we'll continue to go there. We have to just continue with our health and mitigation strategies and, you know, wearing our masks, washing our hands, doing all the right things. Transportation we'll talk about and really getting kids settled. You know, we have been open, sometimes people say we're reopening, but we've been open all year. And so we're, we're at an advantage with that. But at the same time, you know, it's coming all back together, taking care of kids' social emotional learning. So at North Andover High School, they are looking at the schedules and finalizing for students transitioning from OLA to the full in-person. Also working on the OLA schedules that, you know, for the remaining of the year. So OLA will be in place for the remainder of the school year. That's often a question that we get. You know, food, we have different options and as we blast it out and Mr. Jackson will blast out, there's an opportunity for breakfast time slot. A longer snack increased to 25 minutes from what it was previously 10. And as you've noticed, if you've driven around town, Mr. Goncalves' joke is it's getting intense around here. I think he's used it like 10 times, but I wanted to use that one tonight.
That's from the Bad Dad Jokes Calendar because I have that at my house.
It's pretty bad. And it's going to be a grab and go lunch at the end of the day, much like the schedule now. Again, the health and mitigation strategies. I mean Cheryl Bazak, our nursing team, I can't say enough about the work they do in keeping our kids safe and doing the right thing. Transportation and maximizing, you know, the parking lot. So that, you know, they oversold in the hybrid because, you know, they wanted to be able to fit the transportation they needed because we had no buses. And we'll be accommodating all previously permitted seniors and juniors and it's very important to support the needs of transportation. So Mr. Jackson's going to make that work. Dr. Mealy and Lucy have sent out information. You know, they are, were able to find a way to provide buses at the middle school and the high school. So that's really exciting. And again, paying attention to the, each student as they return from OLA. You know, a lot of students, like I said, mentioned earlier in that story, you know, haven't been out. So for a lot of students, this is a big step forward. So guidance has reached out to all students and connected with them transitioning from OLA to support the transition. And Mr. Jackson won't be sending out much more comprehensive information tomorrow on the 16th. And at NAMSS, Mr. Goncalves has, you know, updated me and said, classes and schedules are being finalized for students transitioning from OLA to fill in person and from in-person to OLA. Note, I think it was what was really critical and really awesome is that we didn't have to have team changes. And that, again, with elementary too, like a lot of districts. And that, again, with elementary too, like a lot of districts, you know, you can ask around, had to really, it was really disruptive. Kids had to move from their homeroom, you know, their classroom teacher they've had all year in 4th grade and go to a different teacher, you know. So the kids who were in-person didn't have to leave their classroom teachers. We did have a few students that went from OLA and they were coming back and there was no space at their homeschool and they're finishing out this school year at a different school. But the students who have been in-person all year, it was good to be able to not be disruptive with that. And at the middle school, the same. As you saw in the memo sent out last week and Mr. Goncalves, I'm sure, has been sending quite a bit of information, including videos. Snacks, 25 minutes because lunch will be at the end of the day and that will also be outside unless it's inclement weather. And the teams have worked really hard to find places so that we can safely eat and that's six feet apart, well unmasked. Health and mitigation strategies, they will continue to remind and review, you know, all of the current practices. They're working. Transportation, we're thrilled that we'll be able to add busing at both levels. And the staff has been providing resources and class meeting on Wednesday will continue to, continue to meet the social emotional learning needs of our students. And right after break, I think really critically, I'm excited as a dad of a middle school. April 26th and April 27th, students and staff will be reviewing protocols, expectations for the full return. And we'll also be viewing the following updated videos, health and safety, drop off and pickup, breakfast, snack and lunch, general school expectations and protocols. And all previously shared information may be found on the NAMs website. So I can actually link this to the agenda. But it's a lot of work to come back to school and we're excited that we have the opportunity to do so. And I think, I look forward to getting around to those schools too, to see our students united. So. Let's see here now. I'm still presenting, Ms. Picard.
You're doing beautifully, Dr. Gilligan.
Thank you. Between two computers and let's see now. Well, it's not as easy, you know, I took it for granted that Dr. Mealy runs this and with Helen and, you know, Amy's pinch hit a few times this year, so. But next up, we have the elementary data presentation, so.
Before we go to that, let's just make sure that there are no questions from the membership and I'll just do the go around. Ms. Witsky Lynch?
I have no questions.
Ms. Petrowski?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
Just a quick question on middle school. You know, I was obviously part of the negotiating team with Mrs. Picard on lunch and snack and all of that. And there are, I've heard from a number of friends who've reached out to me directly regarding snack time and, you know, the length of the day by the time some of these students, you know, get their lunch at the end of the day and then, you know, maybe get home and have an opportunity to eat. So the question was kind of, is there, I mean, they've got 25 minutes, so a student can kind of, if they choose to pack a lunch, they can have a sandwich as a snack or?
Students can pack as big a snack as they want. I know that my snacks are typically a lot bigger than other people's, but they can do that. And I think it's important to point out, Mr. McDevitt, that Dr. Mealy is working with Erica Murphy around, you know, not just our typical snack, but making a snack a little more substantial. So, you know, particularly with the protein in there, so as well as the lunch at the end of the day. Erica Murphy is just amazing, so I have no doubt they'll be able to do it and make adjustments as needed. But that is a difference in the day in order to have the grab and go lunch at the end of the day, to bring these kids back. Because as we know, we've been trying to, you know, expand the middle school or work on this space as part of the ongoing work in Facilities Master Plan 2 and the subcommittee because it's, it's, we have the, one of the largest class sizes over there in this region. So that's important.
I think, and snack and lunch are still provided for free, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think one of the things that might help parents, and perhaps Mr. Goncalves can help distribute this out as well, is, you know, what some of those snack options will be and how we can kind of help. Hungry students are not necessarily great learners, right? So, you know, feed them, feed the body, feed the mind. And, you know, if we can do that and help parents be assured that they're, they're getting a substantial snack, I think that would be great.
I agree. And I think that was something that was really important, you know, to Mr. Goncalves and Dr. Mealy. And I know that that works ongoing. And I think the word that comes to mind is hangry, right? Like, I know I get that.
I'm guilty of it. Yep, I know it.
Anyway, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. Ms. Mabley?
No questions. I have a middle schooler. I think Mr. Goncalves' communications have been very thorough and very good. Thank you.
Excellent. And I do actually have two questions. One, we mentioned breakfast at the high school. Do we do breakfast at NAMs at all?
I believe we do have breakfast at NAMs, absolutely.
Okay, so, thank you, that's helpful. And then, we are able to provide buses. That's a huge, that's a huge success and I'm really pleased to hear that. And I'm wondering, we had a public comment some time ago that there were funds perhaps left over from last spring when they were, you know, put on account when, you know, when everything went down. Is there additional charge for busing for those older students or is that something we're able to provide gratis this year?
Yeah, so I know that Dr. Mealy had put out information about paid busing and it's really critical. It's to the extent, I think it's about 10 buses at each school. Not what the typical run is each year, but they were able to make that work and there'll be more centers and spots for people to come. But in terms of the paid busing, I think it was $25, but, you know, talking to Dr. Mealy earlier today, it looks like that most likely that we're not going to have a charge for that. You know, initially they thought we were going to be able to. I can't, I haven't confirmed it officially with Dr. Mealy, but I had spoke to him prior to the meeting and asked the same question just as we move forward. So it appears that that is going to happen.
That's terrific. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Oh, 50, I'm sorry, sorry.
If you had not taken the reimbursement last year, you would get a $25 credit.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
That's what the email said.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sorry about that. I saw the 25. I don't have any.
Oh, so I missed an email along the way?
I think we all got it as parents.
Oh, I don't have any kids in school.
I will forward it to you, Ms. Picard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, no, I really appreciate everything that was presented because, you know, even if we don't have kids at these different levels, we are interested in what's happening. You know, people really care. And community members that don't have kids in school really depend on, you know, the information that's shared in these public sessions. So I appreciate, I appreciate all that. And I guess we are ready for the next bullet point, the elementary data presentation, Dr. Gilligan.
All right. So I'm going to ask you a question here, Chair Picard. I'm presenting now. Can I just pick another tab?
Probably.
Okay.
Let's find out.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know how you shared. I don't know if you shared a window or a screen or a tab or how you did it, so.
I'm going to stop presenting this one. That didn't work. Okay. We've got a couple of you here. Here we go. Present now. And I'm going to do a tab again.
Very nice flowers, Ms. Picard.
Well, thank you very much. And there it is, Dr. Gilligan. You're doing it. Keep pedaling.
And at this point, I want to turn this over to the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Lorraine Marks and her team. Lorraine, feel free to introduce the folks again if you want or hit the ground running.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I will just remind everyone who is here. So we have Cara Larkum, our STEM Director, Principal Raymond from Thompson School, Principal Leahy from Sargent School and Principal Alachlan from the Atkinson School. And tonight, our principals will be talking specifically about the MAP assessment data and math and reading for grades 3 through 5. Principals are going to review the data and talk about what is happening to address student needs now in the schools. We are not talking about recovery services here tonight. They're going to talk about current initiatives, current actions that they're taking in their schools. We will talk about recovery services in May when we discuss also the early literacy data, the K through 2 literacy data. Just kind of a little teaser, our recovery services, really you're going to be focused a lot on the next school year when all of our students are in school. We will be offering some programs this summer, which we will talk about, but not all of our students access summer programs. So really, the bulk of our recovery services are going to be focused on when all of our students are in school. Toward that end, we have started to discuss some of that and we are posting anticipated openings so that they are ready to be out over April vacation because all of us who are educators know that we did and know that students coming out of college and friends that are looking to change positions often look at those job postings during April break. It's a good time when people have a little bit of a breather to take a look at what other opportunities are out there. So we are going to be posting some anticipated openings. So we will move on to our data discussion and Cara is going to explain the information that the principals will be sharing on their slides. A little bit of this is a quick review from our first presentation, but she's also going to help clarify how the data is presented on each slide for the principals. So go ahead, Cara. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So this is our sixth year using NWA map reading and math, math growth assessments. It's a benchmark assessment that's given three times a year. It's an adaptive assessment where students get more or less challenging questions based on their responses. This is an assessment. The most recent norm study was released in 2020 and it was based on three years of data and 10 million students across the United States. We're going to talk a lot about different percentile ranks tonight and that is a nationally-normed comparison to grade level peers. So we'll talk about grades 3, 4 and 5 and what that percentile rank is. There's no state normative data for this assessment. The 50th percentile is the median, so the middle value. So when we talk about ranking the students and giving every student a percentile, we take their, their test score and if you line them up, you know, from 1 to 100, the student in the middle is assigned the 50th percentile. The 70th percentile is, indicates college and career readiness, so that is one of the goals that we try to aim for. It's important to note that it's not a mastery test, but rather the questions are linked to standards. And then the information provided from this assessment determines where each student is ready for instruction within the classroom. So it can help identify gaps and areas of need and also areas that they're excelling above grade level. Next slide, please. So this is the national study that was done this fall and it's looking at data from over 4.4 million students in grades 3 through 8. And the data that they collected in NWA shows the reading and math assessment across the nation in both the fall 2019, so that's the red graph, red bars, and the teal is the fall 2020. So on the left, you'll see the reading and again, this is the average percentile rank. So if we take all of the students and where they fell in their percentile, they took the average of all of those percentile rankings. What we notice in the reading graph is that students pretty much maintained where they were in prior years, averaging between the 55th and 60th percentile. On the right, the math graph, we can see a difference in percentile. So in fall 2019, the average percentile was between 55 and the 60th percentile. And nationally, the average percentile fell between the 45th and 50th percentile. So you'll be seeing different data across all five schools. If you can switch to the next slide, I'm going to tell you just a little bit about what's on each of those slides to kind of give you that little preview and better understand the information. So the first two slides in each of the, there's five for each school. The first two show that average percentile ranking, one for math and one for reading. And it's showing the data over the last four testing terms, which are fall and winter of this school year and last school year. So this is, again, it's that average, so similar, very similar to a test average. If we give an assignment, a quiz or a test and you're taking the average of how students did. This data is comparing, you know, one grade level to a different group of students that took it in a different year. The next slide shows the percentage of students, oh, nope, finger back for a minute, sorry, the next slide amongst the group of slides for each school breaks down this data into groups of students who fell into different percentile rankings. So if you, if you think of different buckets, we kind of take those students and how they, they scored and what their percentile rank was and we kind of look and see who fell in different ranges of percentiles. So this can help us identify groups of students who have more or less unfinished learning. So it's the, the percentage of students who fell in different percentile ranges. So it's different from that, those first sets of graphs. The next slide in this group of slides indicates the success and needs, as Ms. Marks was mentioning. It does include the overall data again for reading and math, so you can see that, but it also breaks it down with specific data on domains or standards within reading and math. And then the last slide for each of the schools shows two years of map data for the same group of students. So we looked at the current 4th graders, which are the class of 2029, and the current 5th graders or the graduating class of 2028. And we looked at how they did in 3rd and 4th grade or 4th and 5th grade. So kind of seeing how those group of students changed over those two years. So I'm going to pass it off to the first school, which is Kittredge.
Okay, and I am going to try to pinch hit for Principal Cushing tonight. So obviously, I'm not as intimately involved with this data as he is, but I will give it a go here. So when we're looking at the math comparisons at Kittredge, this graph shows us last fall and winter and this fall and winter scores. And as we look at this, we see that this year's scores, fall and winter, are all lower than last year's scores. However, we did see an increase in fall to winter scores in many of our areas here. So our 3rd grade math did increase just a little bit from fall to winter. Our 4th grade math increased and our 5th grade math increased. So that was good for us to see. Again, one of the reasons why we didn't, why we waited to report out on this data is we really wanted to see what kind of progress kids made once we got them into school, even though they were in school on a hybrid model, not as many days. We wanted to be able to look at what that was going to show us. And all of these, I also want to note, are above that 50th percentile, that median percentile. Next slide, please. So this is the reading comparison for Kittredge, again, last fall and winter and this fall and winter. Grade 3 actually for this winter was able to move up and they are above the 70th percentile. So they're above anything that we have seen Cara shared with you, the national norms. And as she mentioned, we want to be above the 70th percentile for career and college readiness. So they have done a great job there. 4th grade has gone up a little bit as well. 5th grade, we saw a slight dip in the reading. Next slide, please. So if you look at these scores, you see that overall in 3rd, 4th and 5th grade, when you look at the winter scores, we are between the 18th and the 25th percent of students who are falling below average. So that's where our attention needs to be focused. In reading, we are, we have between 14 and 20% with our students falling before that, below that average score, score in reading. Almost all cases, however, if you look at this, have shown improvement since the fall. So if you look at the very top line in math, the percentage below grade level for grade 3 in the fall was 25% and when we got to the winter, it had moved down to 20.83%. So they are showing some improvement as we move on through the course of the school year. Next slide, please. So this gives us highlighting some successes at Kittredge and also some needs that we've determined. So in grade 3, our overall reading scores, we had in the fall, 82% of our students were in the average to high average range and in the winter, 85% of them were. One of the things that we saw that our students did very well with was literary text, identifying key ideas and details. In grade 3, in terms of math, we had students falling, about 75% fell in the average to high average range in the fall and in the winter, it was 79%. One of the areas that we saw that we had some need was geometry. And when I spoke to Rich over the course of the year, what I recall him talking about was some concerns around the pacing of when geometry was introduced versus when they actually had this on the test. And that actually falls true with grade 4 as well. So they are looking at the pacing and when they introduce some of that material, both for the MAP and for the MCAS testing because students will be doing the MCAS testing this spring. So I'm just going to go back up to grade 4 here. Overall reading, we had 77%. So I'm just going to go back up to grade four here. Overall reading, we had 77% in the fall, falling in the average to high average range. And in the winter, it was 81%. So again, we saw an increase there. And their strength was in literary text, which is also language. What am I thinking? Language? I have it right here. Forgetting these. Language, context, and I can't even read my writing here. Structure, language craft and structure. Thank you. Sorry for that. So that is, that is what they were working on there. I already talked about the math a little bit there. In reading, the overall reading in the fall was 80% were average to high average and in the winter remained 80%. They were strong with informational text. Again, fell down a little bit as we saw in the graph down in the winter to the 80%. Overall math was in the fall, 76% students average to high average in the winter, 75% of those students. They need some work on measurement and data. And what I recall hearing at Kittredge was that a lot of the measurement and data information in fifth grade was something that was done, covered near the end of fourth grade and there some concern that they didn't quite hit that when we closed schools in March through the spring. So that that's something that Principal Cushing has sat with his fifth grade teachers. They've looked at and they are addressing in their classrooms now. Next slide, please. Well, this is a comparison of the same students as they move from fourth grade to fifth grade or third grade to fourth grade. So in the top category, they were looking at the math scores in overall, we've seen some growth there. So when the students, they were in fourth grade last year and obviously then there were a lower percentage of students who were in need when they were in school all the time. But we did, if you look at the the bottom two rows there for the math for fifth grade, we did see a little bit of an increase in students who have need in math. So it went from 24.44% up to 25%. When you look at reading, we saw the same thing, obviously less need last year. We saw a slight dip in the need this year. So it went to from 20.45% to 19.57%. When you look at your third grade students, again, lower need last year. In fact, last winter in math, there was only 4.44% students who were showing some need. It was fairly high in the fall, 31.25%, but that has come down to 18.75%. So clearly they are targeting some of those skills and students are learning what they need to learn. And then for reading, we had students last year actually interestingly showed more need than they did this year, moving into fourth grade. And our number of students dropped to 19.15% in terms of falling needing more remediation there with the reading skills. So they are working on addressing those skills and making some progress. So and I, I am not sure that I'm going to be able to answer many other questions about Kittredge because I'm not there with the teachers all the time. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this right over to Principal Leahy to talk about Sergeant School.
Thanks, Lorene. And you did a wonderful job. Rich should be, Rich will be proud. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be with you and talk about Sergeant School. But before I talk about the data, I just have to tell you how wonderful the halls and recess and lunchroom. Well, our lunchroom looks a little bit different, but how excited everyone is to be back. The highlight for me this week was a six-year-old boy in first grade who is still learning my name because he calls me Miss Lady. And he saw me, he had been an OLA student, then he came into hybrid late. And when he saw me, I was popping in to see, how's it going? And he was very enthusiastic and said, is it going to be like this all the time where everybody's here and we do all the same stuff? And that just touched my heart about how we all have weathered this year and how resilient the kids are. And I, I can't say enough about my team and the teachers. I know, I know every principal will echo that. I want to be respectful of your time, but I think we, we look at the data and when I look at it, I see the faces of the kids that I know represent this and we're doing good work and we have great things in plan. And we've been very resourceful this year at Sergeant. I know all of my colleagues have, we've all had to be, but on working where we grab more people to do small group instruction. And so anyway, I'm just, I couldn't say enough about my teachers and how proud I am of the whole staff at Sergeant. So again, similar to what Lorene just said on the math comparison, this is where our concern is at Sergeant School. And our dip, as you can see, with the unfinished learning for the fall, the very first fall, winter, and then back for winter and fall of 2021. We have concerns for the third grade math is an area of concern for us. And one of the things that this has highlighted, very similar to what Lorene mentioned regarding the measurement piece and working with the teachers and that, I'll be very honest, that's what has been tough for us this year because of the schedule of the hybrid and then teachers prepping for two, three different plans for in-person and remote and then synchronous. That what we have really missed, and I know I've talked to other principals, we all are in agreement of the wonderful time we've had in the past three years with the collaboration time in the mornings for teachers and just to get together and look at student work together and see as a team, what are we missing? And so the math piece for us is of concern when you see the dip from the fall for third grade of the 75%. And then the same if you go across the board. So what are we doing in place right now? I mean, we have thoughts for as we move forward, but we're working towards a tier one work with students and small group instructions. One of the things I remember when I became principal, we were talking about MCAS data with the previous principal and we had started a thing called Math Elite Madness at Sergeant School. And what we did was we tried to break the kids down and get more math time and instruction. And one of the things we tried was using Pro Books. And Carol Larkham can attest, she was part of the team and I had some wonderful parent volunteers. And basically, we couldn't get first graders and kindergarteners to log on without at least three adults around them to help them log on. And to watch them now, I was in a classroom this morning where teachers are working specifically on the focus task of math by being able to break into small groups and saying, this is where you go on your Zern. So she, she might be able to differentiate with some students that are at a higher level and they're working with the Zern while she's doing small intervention groups with kids. So I just see the progress. I'm trying to pull out a lot of the positive things from the pandemic. And one of them has been the use of technology and the wonderful resources we have with Zern and ST Math. And I'm proud of our minutes with all of that is increasing. But it still doesn't take away the work that we have before us. Next slide. On our reading at Sergeant School. This is, and I'm trying to be brief, but there's a big story here where we have worked for the last three years when I started, we started a data room and we focused on reading where we had a goal and I created magnets for every student we tracked. And it was in one of the old kindergarten classrooms. And I did this by great use of the reading coaches and then specifically Kristin Ando coming in, who is really the queen of data, of being able to invite teachers coming again for that collaboration time, but then all of our PD to actually track the reading progress and where we needed smaller groups of intervention. And what I want to do is take that same model and bring it to math and be able to do the same thing for really focused attention. Because if you look at our reading scores, we have done well. It's, it's, I mean, there's been dips and gaps, but again, I think Lorene mentioned it. We're talking about two days a week, we had kids in person. And as much as the teachers really did remarkable work in, in being able to pivot to remote and synchronous learning. And then hearing my parents talk when they come in, just to say how wonderful it is to have the student in front of a teacher for live learning five days a week. So I think this is representative of that, but I'm also very confident that the five days a week for three or for first grade all the way up through fifth grade, our, our scores will continue to climb. Next slide. In looking at this with Kristin Ando and breaking down again for the the, the, the data that is here for third grade, fourth and fifth grade for fall and winter. I have concerns. If you look in that top right, the 26 and 32, 32.7, 0.97%. We want to get this low. I'd like it to be all in single, single digits. And so the third grade team has started to work more intensively on what has been missing from where we had the gap in the spring from those students that were in second grade to those students that are now in front of them. Using exit tickets, relying on the data from the Zern math as well as for the ST math and doing comparisons. Next slide for comparison of the grade level over two years. Am I on the same slide? Yeah. Sorry, thanks. Thank you. It's getting late, right? I need to turn up the light and make my glasses cleaner, I think. Third grade, fourth grade and fifth grade highlight successes. If I could make a big chart like the size of my wall here, I would put way more highlighted successes about Sergeant School in this year of a pandemic. But if you look at it by data wise, just specifically related to map testing that we've done well with the reading from third grade in the fall. We have seen some dip, but we were at that 95th, 98th percentile to a winter of 80, 85%. And, and again, my area of concern that we're working on is the, the math, the determined needs would be in math of the the third grade and measurement and data. And then we share the same with Rich. And I think you're probably going to hear the same with Erin and Chris on geometry. That's been a very consistent theme through fourth and fifth grade. So I always say, so what now what? So, so what now what? As we're trying really hard in the time that we have for distilling down student needs, breaking them into small groups for small group instruction. And then forecasting out, what do we want to do as we start to, to give back full time, all the time, as my little friend in second grades, first grade saying, is it going to be like this all the time? And I said, it's going to be even better. And that what we want to do is model the work that we've done related with using the coaches so extensively. I think this, this ability that we have had through the pandemic of having the coaches collaborate really well on these crazy Zoom and Google meets has really solidified their relationship. That teachers are so open to saying, I don't know everything and I'm not afraid to ask for the help. Because I have a big quote at Sergeant, we say all the time, is all of us are smarter than one of us. So we push really hard on the collaboration and on using the coaches and Cara. If we could just multiply her by five because of the work she's done at OLA, we haven't had that support with the math coaches as much because of the tumultuous year. So I'm hopeful that as we look to next year with some more consistency with math, math coaches, but if we're passing out prizes, the prizes go to the coaches as well as the teachers because they've been remarkable. I think my time is up. Do you have any questions?
So yeah, the, the way this is going to go for the membership is we're going to hear from a principal and then we'll ask that principal whatever questions we have. So we'll have several go-arounds of questions. So I would start again with Ms. Batskin Lynch.
I thought we were doing questions at the end. You can come back to me later.
That's fine. If anybody has burning questions, then we can always go, we can go around again later. But Ms. Petrowski.
How many, excuse me, how many teaching coaches do you have at your, at your school?
Take that.
Yes, sure. Can I say I'm glad that she's on board as a new school committee member? Welcome.
Thank you. So my, okay. Did you hear my question? I didn't know if you heard.
I did, Pam. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
We actually have, right now, we have two literacy coaches that work K through five. So this year, the, you know, the, the roles have varied year to year depending on needs. This year, they are split. So one works primarily K through two and the other three through five. And I don't know whether you saw, but in, in past school committee meetings early in the year, we shared some of the documentation. They do complete scope and sequence. They do lessons. They do videos. They do all kinds of support for the teachers as well as, as meet with them. We had a math coach, we had one math coach for K through eight. Last year, our math coach had some health issues that continued into this year and she is no longer with us. We do not have a math coach and really haven't had a math coach all year. I mentioned the posting of anticipated openings. Math coaches in there and we're hoping to have more than one math coach supporting us next year. The literacy coaches we have have been absolutely phenomenal. I think that they've paved the way with our teachers in terms of that trust and the meeting and what they're able to do to support the teachers. And we're hoping that we can get some math coaches in to do the same thing.
So just to clarify, are the coaches across all the elementary schools or does each school have their own?
No, they are across all the elementary schools. So we have two coaches, two literacy coaches for six elementary schools.
Thank you. Mr. McDevitt?
I have a couple of quick questions. The first one is actually perhaps for Mrs. Marks or Mrs. Larkham. But I know that there's three assessments that are done. Obviously, we didn't have an assessment done in spring of 2020. When will the assessment be done in 2021 spring? Is that a May, June?
Yep. So I'll take that one. We're actually about to open the test window for the spring assessment. NWA recommends after 32 weeks of instruction, we've had some conversations. Technically, the week after vacation, if you, if you count full weeks with five days a week, we'd be into week 31. So some of our schools might start assessing right after vacation to get that data to be able to use it this spring right away. And some might, might give it a week. They're feeling still that need to kind of adjust to full day, five days a week and test right after. So we're about to start the spring assessment window.
And if I can just add, Mr. McDevitt, we did purchase the map test for grades K through eight. And because we have purchased it already, they are going to give us some, I guess, some freebies. So we're going to, we're going to be able to test all those grades this spring.
Okay, so we're, we're really thinking, it, it may vary a little bit, but end of April, early May. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay, all right. I'm trying to see heads nod and all of that. Awesome. Mrs. Leahy, I really liked your quick analogy with the student of, you know, is it going to be like this every day? And a friend of mine's son said on the, on April 5th, the parents asked, are you excited to go back to school? And he said, this is better than Christmas. So just to kind of put that out there, I think all of the students were extremely excited. When I look at this and, and I'm looking at the, I think it's your last slide, Mrs. Leahy, it's the Sergeant comparison of grade level over two years, which is what's presented. If I'm reading this correctly and, and help me if I'm misinterpreting this. When I look at third to fourth grade, so the bottom two sections for math and reading, I'm seeing that in fall of 19, we had 95% of our students who were above grade level. We're now at 72.5, so a drop of 22.5. And then in reading, we were at 97.47. We're now at 81.25, so a drop of 16.22. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So understand, you know, situations that nobody wanted, nobody expected. But as these students who are, who started off, you know, 2020 in third grade are now fourth graders and going into fifth grade. I'm really excited to see in the recovery plan services, what do we do with these fifth graders for next year? Because the drop of these two stands out so far very dramatically. And so, you know, one of the things that I really want to see in the recovery plan is how do we target these specific types of students and these grades to hone in on where there are gaps and where we have to, you know, put resources, tools in the teacher's hands. And, and I would look to, to all of you really to say, what do you need? We've got money. What do we need? But those two numbers really, really jump out at me. So that's it.
Well, I, I would agree with you and Well, I would agree with you. And I prepared for tonight for the data of what are we doing right now? But certainly, that's where I can't emphasize enough of the collaboration piece for the teachers together as teams from vertical collaboration, where a fifth grade team is talking with a fourth grade team consistently, but then also having another pair of eyes that is examining the data and offering some insight. And that comes by way of the coaches. It's interesting that Pam's asking, does every building have one? I mean, I can't say enough of how hard they've worked to come up with. I have specific students that have just happened recently in the last few months that I've tapped into the coaches to be able to say, what are we missing? And it was particularly around reading, and we narrowed it down with the use of Lexia. But then, once we had the data of what they needed, we were able to get creative with how are we giving small group instruction or repetitive refocused learning? And we've done it with just creative ways of we're bringing in some people as building substitutes that were, I have a teacher who's a retired English teacher, that she's just doing great leaps on repetition, on work with students in the hallway, and she's doing it three or four times a week now that they're back in school. So as far as for what you asked, Mr. McDevitt, on recovery, I just think the more people that are looking at the data that we can get in and offering it, and then giving that to the teacher as more resources is just clutch.
Yep.
I'll finish. I can't keep going. I could talk to the kids forever. But we got Erin and Chris both waiting to go to bed.
And we have Ms. Mable yet to ask questions.
Sorry, Amy.
No, that's wonderful, though, because I was going to hold, because I think these two questions, and actually, Mr. McDevitt just kind of asked the same thing. I was going to, I would suggest if you can wait a little longer on the spring testing to see how the five days a week impacts things. I mean, if you can even wait like another extra week or two, it seems like that would help you know, is that making a huge difference or help all of us know. But also, I'd also written down that I hope that we can just move to full time, you know, at least two math coaches. Because obviously, nationally, math has been bad, you know, rough. And so far, what we've seen from the presentation so far, math is is struggling. So we've seen how much great work the reading coaches, literacy coaches have provided. I look forward to hopefully increasing the math program that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mable. And I would, I would just chime in and say a couple of things. One, it's my understanding that this kind of testing is not to show what we're doing and what's helped. That would be more like your mastery testing, that would be more like your MCAS testing. This kind of testing is telling you where students are so that you know how to teach them next. So putting this testing off would actually be a detriment to teachers and students rather than doing it sooner and and being able to do the correct tier one interventions that you do in order to form your small groups to do that work. And that's, I mean, that's a statement in the form of a question. I'm just trying to find out if what I think is true is, is if my thinking is correct. So thank you. I see you all nodding along with that. And then, you know, in addition to not having math coaches this year, our curriculum coordinator has been our OLA coordinator. So we've really had a gap in that area. In addition to math being a more challenging subject to to capture, reading, reading can happen outside of school, reading can happen with lots of different adult supports. That's not to diminish by any means the direct instruction of experienced, skilled reading teachers. But we know nationally that the math is, it's just harder to catch. It needs to have more direct instruction from from those folks. So and then also just to clarify, because it took me quite a while to understand, these math coaches or reading coaches are not coaching individual students, but coaching the teachers on how to approach both individual students and learning challenges that may present themselves, not special education challenges, but, you know, how do you teach multiplying fractions? What language do you use? How, you know, what methods do you use? So that's, that's really obviously been a been a great loss. I love Ms. Leahy, Ms. Lady, that that you stated, it is a sergeant school goal to have all single digit percentages that are below grade level. When we can state goals like that, we can measure whether or not we're reaching them. So I appreciate you doing that and appreciate the work. And we're on to Ms. Alafon, is that where we're going? Whoever's next. Don't let me direct.
We're off to the Thompson.
Go Tigers.
Good evening, everybody. So Karen had a little story. I'll share a brief, first of all, I would echo Karen's comments that we're so happy to be back in person with all the kids. It's starting to feel a little bit like it used to feel, although we're distance in our cafeteria and so forth, we're making everything work and students are happy. I had the occasion this week to go out to recess and a little story for this evening. First, I said, me, Mr. Raymond, are you out here to play with us today? And I said, well, I can certainly play. Or are you coming out to ask us how we're doing? Because you ask us, you've asked us that a lot in the last few weeks. And so I said, well, to that point, how are you doing? And she said, I'm really happy to be here. She said, I just love my teacher, and now I get to see her five days a week. And I, and so I echoed, I said, well, you know, your teacher is wonderful. And she said, and you know what else? She said, I really like seeing all my classmates. She said, now I get to see them in class. And she goes, guess what? I said, look, she said, they look a little bit different in the classroom than they do on the computer. So I think she sort of sums up what a lot of kids are feeling. And kids are thrilled, five days a week. I want to give a shout out to the Thompson staff for all their work, not only through this past year, but in the reopening. I think our teachers are really happy to have their kids back. So this first graph, as you know, is the math comparison. You can see that overall, our baselines in mathematics are lower this year when compared to last year. We had, as far as average percentile, we had some slight increases in both grade three and grade five, with a small dip in grade. Next slide. In reading, again, another bar graph comparison, our percentages, actually, our baseline percentages in where we where we were last winter in grade four and five have been fairly steady. We did have some growth this year in grade three of almost 10 percentage points. And in grades four and five, we pretty much held steady. While we want to see increases, we dipped slightly in both of those. So again, as we've talked about, you're looking at the comparison of the kids in three, four, five. So if we first take a look at the math, certainly in third grade, we're not where we where we would want to be. We actually decreased slightly in our mathematics from the fall of this year to the winter. When we go to the next slide in a little bit, I'll talk a little bit about some of the things we're doing to address that. In fourth grade, we experienced a slight increase and a corresponding decrease in students who are below grade level. And in grade five, again, we had a very slight decrease in mathematics for students at or above grade level with a corresponding increase in students below grade level. When you go down to the reading scores, we had an increase in reading of almost eight percentage points of students at or at or, excuse me, at an above grade level. And again, a corresponding decrease in below. And that in fourth grade, we had a very slight increase, we pretty much just held steady in fourth grade. And in fifth grade, we had a very slight decrease from at or above grade level and a corresponding increase in below grade level. Next slide. So successes, as we've kind of talked about, you see the reading area up there. We have in third grade, our fall percentage was 65. And we bumped up to 73 in the winter. Information, text, key ideas and details were a pullout of success. I think I would echo what Karen said, there have been many successes. I could add so many things on this slide for the staff. It needs mathematics need, we had 53% of the kids average to high, which dipped. Measurement and data, measurement and data, you'll note on this slide actually shows up in both the third grade and the fifth grade. And geometry shows up in the fourth grade. One of the points that was made by both Ms. Marks and Karen is, we're looking at the pacing. So a lot of it has to do with the pacing, where these particular math standards show up in the curriculum. And in a lot of the grades, the teachers have been sort of evaluating, reevaluating, collaborating all year and adjusting some things to really give some more focus and attention. Some of the other things that I want to highlight on this slide overall that sort of teachers are doing. So in every grade, teachers are really pulling resources from all of our, from Eureka, they're pulling from Zern, and they're pulling from ST math. And what they're doing is they've been using the morning time. So our students are coming right in in the morning, they're not going to recess. So teachers are really targeting resources out of those different curriculums. And they're, different kids are getting different things during that time. When we were in the hybrid model, teachers were looking at opportunities to increase their time on math when they could. And I know that a specific third grade example in reference to our data being a little bit lower in third grade in math, and certainly not where we would want it to be, the teachers have been trying to tie in a lot of the work in math to other areas. So for example, right now, they're in the weather and climate unit in science. So they're trying to tie in interpreting data from the graphs in the weather and climate unit. They're also looking at really across the grades, trying to find ways to incorporate math in a hands on fashion while sort of maintaining safety guidelines. So things like partner workstation rotations with partners, using manipulators when they can. Those things have been a little bit more challenging in the online model. But when they've had kids in person and now having them five days a week, I think going forward is going to be a big boon for them in these areas. In terms of reading, I can't say enough about Jackie Taylor and Ann Joyce. All of our teachers have met with them this year. We look, we look at the data relative to the classroom, to the grade level, to individual students, and set out action plans, whether it be small group reading support and so forth. The teachers have been following a lot of the lessons and the guidance that the coaches have been providing. And they've really been thankful and happy to pull from some of the resources that the coaches have been doing. And I really just want to plug the coaches because I spoke to my staff about the data during the year, the coaches come up all the time and the resources they're providing and the work and the support they're providing for our staff. So I just thought you should all of that. That's really, really important. Next slide, please. So here again, we have the comparison over the last two years of the students. And it's kind of a mixed bag when we look at this. So our fourth, the fifth graders in math, certainly, those numbers are not where we would want to be, 85.51% above grade level in winter 2020, compared with 73.85% now with a corresponding increase in students who are below grade level. So that's something, as was previously mentioned, we want to look at that really carefully as we go forward through the rest of this year. And then as we go forward through recovery and so forth, we certainly want to work on that area. Reading has been a little bit better for us, 91% last year in the fall compared with 85.94 this year. We did take a little bit of a dip on the map scores from fall to winter. And then third and fourth grade, again, we dipped overall from last year. However, our third graders from last year, their reading scores increased this winter. So we were really happy to see that. And then in third to fourth, our math scores, excuse me, 64.81 to 72.4 increased. And then third to fourth grade in reading, we've been kind of steady there. So this group of readers, our third and fourth graders, they've stayed pretty steady. But certainly, we want to continue to try to accelerate the learning in that grade level for the kids. Any questions? I tried to be succinct and timely.
I think you did great. Ms. Betschkin.
I actually am, I have a question about that, you know, 9% right up to 20%, that's more than doubled. What, what do you think that is attributed to?
Which one are you looking at, Holly?
The reading, fourth grade, fall 2019 to winter 2020, 2020?
Oh, you're talking about the 8% below grade level to 18?
To 20. 8.9% to 20%? So fifth?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So that was, that was our data from last year. You know, we had, there were more students that were tested. It's, I would have to go back and look at individual students to see what actually accounted for that, because we're looking at overall global data for the fourth grade. There may have been students that moved in, there could have been, there could be a variety of things there. So without having the individual student data in front of me, and it's important to know, I don't know that we've said it maybe in the beginning, when we look at this data, we're also looking at the individual student data. The nice thing about the map data is in addition to sort of the overall picture that we're looking at here, we can really drill down and break it down by student and by standard area. And that really helps us be able to differentiate for each particular student in the classroom. So without having all that in front of me, I suspect that there's some individual variation among the standards and the particular students in there.
Maybe I'm not reading it right, but isn't it just an increase of three students that were tested? 67 to 70?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then just to echo what Pam said, my overall, I don't have any questions. But my overall concerns for everybody, for all of this is the math. I mean, you know, we've got half of this, more than half the students in grade three below grade level. And then in sergeant, a third. And then Kittredge, we went from 4% below to 31% from third to fourth. So I, I agree that it's very important that we get these math coaches, as many as we can with this COVID recovery fund.
I think, Holly, we would echo your concerns. I know when we've discussed this as principals, we too are concerned about the math. And, you know, looking ahead at support for us, for support for the staff and so forth, I think, you know, definitely important. So we agree.
Yep. I know, just a comment.
Thank you, Holly. Pam?
Yeah, so I just, you know, some of the same, like, things just jumped out at me is those third grade numbers. And then just, sorry, it's like a weird feedback. Oh, okay. So that just kind of stood out to me. And then I'm wondering what we have for like subgroups for these kiddos that aren't meetings, like where they need to be? Have we looked at that? And is that how we're, you know, differentiating? Are we looking at, I'm an L teacher, so are we looking at our L population? That's always the first thing that comes to mind. I know the Thompson and the Atkinson have a larger L population. And then so I'm wondering if they're falling into those category, that that population of students, and then our other students with high learning needs. And then just wondering, in general, and I don't know if this is the right time to ask this, but if if those are the kiddos that are in there, what do we have for EL services for those kids? Because I know this math, Eureka math is very language and heavy, and it needs a lot of scaffolding. And so I'm just wondering what supports are there. And I don't know if you can answer that right now, but just tossing it out there.
My simple answer is yes, we're looking at that very carefully. Absolutely.
I'm going to just jump in for a second. Those are great questions, Pam. And the last, the last time we went over some of the elementary data, we did kind of show, we showed some different graphs and we showed, talked a little bit about the students who are high needs and the percentage of those students that fell into, you know, what was, what we called the red or the orange categories, is this is all graphed out. So there, there is certainly a percentage of our L students, our title one students, our special needs students who fall within that category. And just a quick answer for you on the EL piece, we are working to hire EL teachers in the district. We are working to hire EL teachers in the district. We have an EL teacher at the Atkinson School, which is a school that has our highest percentage of EL students. Some of our other schools are EL tutors. At the kindergarten building, we also have a part-time reading teacher. She's also a part-time EL teacher. So we, part of our, our work is we move forward when you, you'll have a chance to see our, it's actually seven-year budget process now, is hiring the EL teachers. We've also just updated the EL curriculum. We've been using some of our grant money to really look at that and change some of, some of the curriculum that we've been using. So it's just some quick answers on that. We can certainly talk more about that.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. McDevitt?
I think a couple of my questions have already been asked, you know, but again, I really, you know, I, I struggle and I like to see this data. But, you know, it, it is very concerning to see some of the jumps that we have here with students below grade level. And, and I think, you know, one of our goals that, that we should probably amend, Mrs. Picard, is where we are for what number of students we have at, below the grade level here. Because, you know, to, to look at these and to be seeing some of them in the twenties, I don't think is what anybody necessarily wants to see. And, you know, we're certainly seeing that, you know, in all of our elementary schools. So, you know, again, Mr. Raymond, you know, food for thought. But, you know, what, what can we do to help you and your staff in order to, to move these numbers? And, and so I just challenge you with that as we pull together the recovery pieces.
I appreciate that.
And Ms. Mayberry?
Yeah, all, all the questions have been, been asked for sure. The key thing that Ms. Witski brought up was that fourth grade, fall 2019 to winter 2020, that's last year we're talking about. So it had nothing to do with COVID, actually. That's a massive drop. And I, I do appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Raymond, that there might have been a couple of kids moved in or what have you, or some swapping. But that's, has nothing to do with COVID, that has to do with something when, when a miss. So, yes, work to be done. Thank you.
And again, I think I'm going to, I'm going to ask my questions in the forms of statements. For years, I asked, why don't you guys present MAPS data in addition to the MCAS data? And you said it's really not set up that way. It doesn't, you know, the learning doesn't happen at, at a straight line. It's, it's more like a staircase, it's like up and across, up and across, up and across. So, you know, depending on when you're presenting data, like, I mean, I wouldn't expect you all to change the pacing of the work that you're doing or your curriculum mapping in order to match the MAPS testing. So I would imagine that there are certain aspects of the MAPS test that you just know, don't apply to your students because you haven't presented that, those curriculum pieces, those standards yet. And so you're not looking at those numbers going, holy cow, our kids don't know about, you know, whatever, geometry, because you know that's in your next unit and that you haven't gotten to it yet. And this kind of reporting does not provide us with the same kind of data that we're, we've gotten so used to of having all the subcategories, you know, and all those, what, what Dr. Hutchinson used to say, once the patient is dead, we can give you the autopsy and the information, but there's nothing you can do with it. So it's, it is hard to hear and, and interpret this data. But you, you know, you going from eight percent to twenty percent last winter, you would have looked at all those individual students and said, oh, yeah, well, you know, Johnny had been out with mono for two weeks and, you know, we hadn't gotten to those, you know, whatever, I don't know what they were. Maybe you changed the curriculum map and, and you did things differently. So it's just, I would caution us to not take this data as this, as a comparison of what we would be seeing with MCAS. Or comparing, you know, one group of kids in one school to one group of kids in another school, without dismissing that it is alarming, these are alarming numbers. But when we look at these numbers with the national data, it's, we, I think we need to be careful not to like jump up and shout like we did so many years ago, Thompson School is failing, right? When, when we had that MCAS crisis back in the, the early 2000s before most of you guys were, were, were here in the district doing this particular work. Because when Thompson was failing all those years ago, quote unquote failing, they had actually increased their MCAS scores, but they hadn't increased it at a fast enough pace. So, you know, I think we have to be cautious and, and clear when we're talking to families that this data is being used for individual students to improve individual learning. So that was all a question. Was I right? Okay, thank you for helping me understand. I do spend a certain amount of time looking at MAPS data in, in other places in my life. So I, I feel like I'm learning a great deal. So thank you very, very much. And we're, we're on to your next victim, Ms. Marks.
So just before I have Principal O'Laughlin start, I'm just going to toss in another tidbit of information. You know, Karen Leahy talked about her data room and working on data. We, we are working on data with all of our principals and really trying to establish that ability and confidence in our teachers, in our, our grade level teams to look at all of this data and help determine what kind of conversations to have around the data. Utilizing is the principles that you've heard speak already, our coaches. Another thing that we are doing is our, our curriculum team was signed up with Harvard to take their DataWise class last year. And when the schools, everything closed down, obviously that didn't happen. They did contact me about doing it virtually. I never heard from them, them again. I have tried to contact them a few times this year unsuccessfully. So we are now going, we have signed on with Boston College, who is going to be doing a two-year process of working with all of our principals and our curriculum team. That includes our coaches, our curriculum directors, to really establish and fortify a way to look at data and to have those conversations. And our principals are all already committed to July fourteenth and fifteenth for that first meeting. Cara, Kristen, and I are meeting with the consultant in June. She and I had some conversations today. She's going to be sending me all the kind of, I had asked, what kind of information do you want from us for that meeting? So it's just important to know that that's all, you know, when we talk about recovery plans, this is all part of our moving forward as well. So it's not, you know, it's not, it's very multifaceted how we are moving forward. So just because there were so many questions about looking at data, I thought I'd toss that in there as well. So Principal O'Laughlin, are you set?
I am good. Evening, everyone. I'm probably going to echo a lot of what everybody said. But at Atkinson, also, our common theme is that less kids are struggling in reading than they are in math. There's a lot more unfinished learning in math than there was in reading. But however, one of the brightest spots in all of this is that instruction matters and that Atkinson staff is going above and beyond just to provide that necessary instruction. So this data shows how crucial the instruction is. So looking at this first slide, again, math being the biggest struggle for our students during the pandemic, we can see that there's a lot of unfinished learning and the domains in which students didn't receive instruction, we'll see like later in the slides, is where students' scores have gone down the most. We've had a decrease of ten average percentile rank points from last winter to this winter. For example, you can see in our fifth grade, the winter 2020 to the winter 2021, went down from fifty-seven point one to forty-seven point five. In our fourth grade, winter 2021 is sixty point seven, and that goes down to fifty point five in the winter of 2021. For the next slide, looking at reading, this was a relative strength. And fourth grade exceeded the district average. Things that we have in place contributing to this, again, our, our awesome coaches, they provided so much assistance with the instructional piece and helped our staff to be able to collaborate, not only as grade levels, but start that vertical collaboration that's so important. And we've had access to virtual Meramec tutoring, so Meramec College students tutoring some of our students. We have the Title I reading support and we've been using Lexia for all of our students. For the next slide, looking at this percentile range. Again, math is an area of greater concern for all these cohorts of students. Looking at, I'm going to echo what most of you just said. This is definitely alarming to me and kind of was hard to swallow when I was looking at this data at first. You can see, like, for example, in math, for the fifth grade, the percentage of students at and above grade level stayed, stayed the same in fall and winter with a percentage of fifty-eight point forty-six percent at and above grade level. But when you're going over in that same column to the right there, forty-one point fifty-four percent below grade level is a huge, huge concern for myself and, and our staff. I think that's obviously attributed to a lot of things. Kids haven't had this consistent practice throughout the year and, and some of our simple things, just as computations. Having been in school for just two days a week, that's definitely a big part of it. And then for students now coming back to full in-person learning, there, there's a large focus. I have to say over the last couple of weeks, it's such, it's so eye-opening to me. The SEL needs are, are huge right now. And, and that is one of our, our biggest focuses. And, and I think it does contribute a lot to our academic performance. So if we look at the next slide. So highlighting, highlighting our successes and determining our needs. Again, looking at grades three and five, the, the success, success with our informational text. And that is something that I've seen in classrooms, not only with our reading, but with our writing. So students have really used this, the Lucy Hawkins and our instructional coaches here provided a lot of support to our teachers with not only reading informational texts and looking at text features, but also helping students with the writing component of, of writing informational texts themselves. And again, when you look down at our needs, a lot of unfinished learning. So measurement and data in our grade three. And then for four, grades four and five, geometry was something that really wasn't touched upon towards the end of last year. It wasn't taught. So again, a lot of unfinished learning and these are our weaker areas. Again, looking at that, that the percentages are extremely high for our below grade level. But here, I, I do like to say that we are successful with our reading piece. A lot attributed to the coaches. And, and I think that's huge in moving forward in math, having those instructional coaches and providing a lot more support to our teachers. It's going to, I think, be huge if we can get that in place. And moving to our next slide. So looking at the, this slide, our current fifth grade up at the top with the class of 2028, and then our current fourth grade, the class of 2029. Again, looking at the percentage below grade level, it's, the numbers are really concerning. Our fifth graders looking at this also struggled in fourth grade. The percentage below grade level is obviously better in, in reading because we have more supports. But you can see that the percentage below grade level stayed the same in math in the fall and winter at that forty-one point fifty-four percent. And it's an area that we need to focus on now that we have kids back in school five days a week. We're able to teach more content. Students are not just getting half this curriculum. So kind of summarizing what we have in place so far and then what would, do we need moving forward? The staff is obviously willing to do anything that they can to help students be successful. And this is a testament to them. It's not been an easy year. Our focus, though, just to kind of bring back some of our needs a lot during the pandemic, has been SEL needs, providing food and academic supplies for our students. I can't tell you how many days our, our staff was off and delivering crayons and pencils and paper to our, to our students. And, and that was huge. I've met with our leadership team constantly, having data meetings. I know Chris talked about this, each grade level meeting with our instructional coaches and really honing in on the data that, in reading that we're continuing to work on. And accessing, accessing, having families access tutors through Meramec College has been really, really key. So moving forward, continuing to work with our leadership team, building in more time for that grade level collaboration. I think it was Karen that talked about where we don't have that block like we did last year. So that, that's been a, a huge loss for us. So we've been finding that time, but having that built into our schedules, I think, is key. Also building in more time for that vertical collaboration piece. And we need some more like school-based PD time to focus every grade level on the important skills that are needed at each grade level. And what did they come with from one grade level to the next? And we're going to continue to focus on the SEL needs. Our guidance counselor is constantly helping with that. We have an intern that's constantly helping with that. But that's something that's even been more noticeable with, with more kids back in the building. So.
Thank you, Ms. O'Laughlin, and we'll have our go-around. Ms. Witski-Lynch.
Hi, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but I have a similar question for you. In the reading from fall 2020 to now, to winter 2021, for fifth grade, you went up eight percentage points below grade level. What would you attribute that to?
So, so Holly, which slide are you on?
I know, it may be hard. I'm sorry, I'm on the comparison of grade level over two years.
Gotcha. Okay. Yep, looking at the current fifth graders, you're saying?
Yes, just from the fall to the winter of this year.
Yep. Again, it's like, like Chris was saying, it really is something like that needs to be dissected, individual students. But also, we continuing to work on still looking at this data and putting them in small instructional groups, which has been difficult. These strategic groups are so important in a typical year, and that hasn't happened, obviously, as often this year. So I think that's something that we need to get back on track with.
That makes sense. I didn't know if it was because the hybrid made it harder for the kids to read consistently. Thanks.
I, I just want to add for the Atkinson School, Erin, would, would it be correct to say that you probably had the largest number of students that also chose Ola? Which I think, you know, we've talked a little bit about that has been a challenge. We try, we worked with Rob Johnson, who's been, he's incredible. He is the community services director up, up at Woodridge. We tried to offer a place at the community center and a staff for students who were in Ola, who lived at Woodridge, to provide some additional support because we believed that that was probably very challenging. We did not have families really take us up on that. And then right before it was determined that we were going to be coming back on April 5th, we were actually working to try to set something up for the students who were in hybrid. And we actually had a few more takers there. The numbers are still, I think, higher with you, Erin, but some of those families have come back now to be in school full-time. And I think that's going to make a difference too. I don't know if you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, I think, you know, to be honest with you, when the year started and our numbers were like eighty, I think it was about eighty-six kids being in Ola, that was a little bit shocking to me. And, you know, in talking with families, there was a lot of that anxiety piece of coming to school. But as time has gone on, you know, we're still getting some Ola students back, but that has definitely made a difference. And a lot of them have been high-need students. So they were able to also, when they did come back in, attend, like, most recently, they attended four days and, and that made a huge difference because they were just getting the instruction repeated every two days. So that, that also helped. And I think, I'm hoping, families have felt a lot more comfortable having their kids come back. So, so yeah, that's, that's been really key. Because it's hard to reach, I, I give credit to all these people who have done remote learning this year. It's really hard. I've observed a lot of classes remotely and to have about, you know, twenty first graders remote in front of you is not an easy task. So, yeah, it's, it's nice to have them back in the building. So that, that was a, a big factor at the beginning of the year mostly.
Thank you. Ms. Pytraski?
So I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, but kind of as a general, I don't know, after we've looked at all of this data, it feels like we need to have some kind of plans. And is there a way that, or is there a plan to have a team put together? Like a representative from each school or a few representatives, like admin, teachers, the coaches, to try to put together like a priority list as we move forward for recovery services? Erin, you kind of already touched on, like, we need SEL, grade level collaboration, vertical collaboration, school-based PD, like, that's a really good start. But I think if there's, if, is there a way to make that- But I think if there's, is there a way to make that a part of the plan to move forward? Because I know everybody has awesome ideas. I know the teachers are thrilled to see each other at the copier, if you're able to make copies now. And even that time, right, has, that's when some collaboration happens, too. And we haven't had any of that, right? I know myself as well. So that's just kind of my thought as we're moving forward. I think everybody's on the same page, like, there has to be a plan, but let's make a priority list of, you know, what the academic needs are, what the social-emotional learning needs are, and what the PD and maybe, like, curriculum or extra, I don't know, supplemental materials might be. Like, is there a committee happening, or I don't know if this is the right?
I can speak to that again, Pam. So we have started to have those meetings. So Kara and Kristin, who are curriculum coordinators, have met with me. And we actually tried to meet with the elementary principal group, but they were so involved and invested in these two weeks of getting the kids back into school that we're meeting, we already have our meeting scheduled right after vacation. But we have met with the secondary principals. I've met with the social-emotional director. So we've had those meetings, and I actually had a document that I put together for those meetings where we look at both academic and SEL needs, tier one and tier two. We talk about professional development needs. We have, with the secondary principals and the SEL director, we prioritized things in different areas, from curriculum to staffing, all of that. And then I took some of that information that I had, and our central office team met all day last Tuesday and started to prioritize those, again, in a bigger way. So yes, those teams are in motion and working and looking at all of those kinds of needs, like I said, at both tier one and tier two levels.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. McDevitt.
Thank you very much. I think you really took the words out of my mouth when you said alarming. And I just want to thank you for just being honest about that. I mean, I think, you know, when you said that, it really resonates. But, you know, to see the numbers that we have here, you know, at 40, over 40% below grade level, is truly alarming for us. And so, you know, to piggyback a little bit on to Mrs. Petrowski's statement, I mean, I really would challenge the administration and Dr. Gilligan and you for, you know, what do we do in the remaining time that we have in the school year to help these students and to help the staff members in order to best serve the needs of these students? Because, you know, they're an easy 10-plus points difference between the other elementary schools here. And, you know, we've talked a lot about recovery services and what those are gonna be, but you need them now. And we need to know what you need in order to get this, you know, charted in a different direction here. And I know it's not necessarily a question for you, but, you know, I would hope that, you know, coming back after break, you know, we can really be putting a plan together to help you with this.
Thank you. And Ms. Maybley.
All the questions, I think, have been answered or comments made. And I think you hit on an important thing. I think maybe, Loreen, you brought it up about, like, Woodridge. There's, you know, varying levels across our whole town of how much at-home support students have when they're at home on their remote days or they're at home for Ola or whatever. And I think that that's a huge factor, that's hard to influence. But I know that you've all been working on that a lot. But that's a hard piece of all this, and just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. I have a couple of things that I just wanted to ask, and probably this is more towards Ms. Marks, but out of what you've just said. You know, we're measuring the academics. We don't have a good way of measuring the SEL or reporting out on that. You know, we don't have, you know, any sort of testing on Maslow's hierarchy of needs, as Nikki would tell us. But I recently learned the phrase "Matthew effect", and my understanding is that students who are not reading at grade level by the end of third grade can have long-term repercussions. I'm hearing over and over again that we're feeling pretty good about the reading. Is there a similar effect with mathematics and mathematics learning? Because what I'm kind of remembering from what Mr. Nugent was saying about, like, the high school and what we do at the high school to help kids, and this is Mr. McDevitt's big question, is how do we help kids who are, you know, here at this point, get to here at the end? Do we have different opportunities with math than we do with reading to help kids, like, you know, hop, skip, and jump to where they need to be? Or do we not know?
I think that's something that we're really looking at right now and trying to. I haven't heard anything like the Matthew effect with math. I don't know, Kara, if you have. But clearly, math is a concern here. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into all the things that we've already talked about in terms of recovery, because there is more. I know I keep kind of dropping things in here, but I want to be able to also present that in a more concerted effort. We actually did advertise for a math coach this year, and we did not get anybody. Once we knew that the coach that we had was not going to be with us anymore. We did put an ad out, we have not found anyone. Staffing this year, I think all the principals will attest to this, has been extremely challenging, just in terms of trying to find substitute teachers, teaching assistants. So in terms of, like, you know, even if, you know, I don't know, even if we went out there and combed the streets right now whether we could get, you know, interventionists into Atkinson School at this point. It's been very, very challenging. But we are looking very seriously at what we can do for math. We have not, since I was at Thompson School as an ETL, I think that year, and Dr. Gilligan was principal, so he can probably remember this as well. We did have a Title I math tutor there who saw some students. But since then, and that was a number of years ago, we have not had any math intervention. It is something that we are looking at for next year as well. However, as all the principals so eloquently spoke to, what we really have to focus on as well is our tier-one instruction. How are we reaching all of those students in the general classroom? What are the strategies we are using? What, how are we targeting the standards that need to be targeted? How can we, through coaching and other ways, support those teachers to be able to reach those students? Because my background is special ed, and I do know that always pulling students out of the general classroom to intervene is not the most productive or constructive way. It doesn't mean some of that is not warranted. We also want to make sure we are really shoring up that tier-one piece with our teachers.
And I just want to appreciate, again, that I've heard, you know, many strategies that you all are using, that you're working on the appropriate small groupings, that you're using a variety of materials and resources, that you're changing the use of time, that you're tying in math with science, that you're doing hands-on manipulatives, station rotation. You know, I'm hearing all of those things. I would not want the community to think that you all are just collecting this data and going, "Oh, we're gonna have some things to do in recovery next year." Like, I know you are working day by day with individual students and with groups of students and with, you know, whole classes. So I think we are, might be ready for the Joe Clark extravaganza.
Yeah, so Joe's gonna be a video. He had a commitment tonight. Now, Helen, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, two things that really stood out to me. One is, like, we've been doing this important work for years. What is the, what do we want kids to know and be able to do? How do we know they know it's the assessment? And then, if they don't get it, what's that targeted intervention? The progress monitoring? And then, you know, where are they when we do that? And what else do we prescribe? And I think that this year has certainly been challenging. But Erin was the first one to bring it up, was the SEL needs. Like, kids coming from trauma, kids being here. You know, we know that kids have faced significant challenges. We know that this data across the country disproportionately impacts special education students, EL students, students from lower socioeconomic classes. We know that. We also know that, you know, some of our small groupings and the collaboration work we do, where we look at not only within a school team, but across grade-level teams across the district. We haven't necessarily had those opportunities with all that's happened this year to do that. So I'm excited for the stability, and you cannot, the research is really clear, that the SEL piece, we have to make sure kids are feeling comfortable at school. And just taking care of the SEL piece, you will see test scores rise. And, you know, this is a snapshot in time. And I think this year, the work that Loreen's team has done, I don't think that anyone should have the thought that they, like, oh, this is about a challenging year. I mean, from day one, they put together the essential standards. What is critical for kids to know? Because we know it's very different. So, like, the work they've done this year has been remarkable. It's really exciting to get the kids back together and back in. And this is a huge step, you know? We got two weeks under our belt after tomorrow, and, you know, they'll probably, some of them are gonna struggle after a week back, just getting back in the routine after break. But I think they need a break. You know, they need a break. And I would say, last but not least, like, that, like, this ongoing work is, like, sometimes I don't know if that, like, that word necessarily, recovery. We know that kids have challenges. And so, like, it wasn't long ago in this district, and we talked about it last year, about what our needs are. So the needs of kids can be endless, and you could intervene endlessly. But there's certainly a need for intervention, right? And then, to the coaching piece, this is critical. It's not a magic answer for everything, but why the coaching is, you know, as Kevin Hutchinson used to say, "More bang for the buck", is we're growing capacity within our school. And we've been working on those tier-one and tier-two double-dose within that setting, because that's most effective, you know? And, you know, so these additional supports, this has been, like, really the work we've done for years. This snapshot in time tells us, yeah, kids are struggling, but we're gonna continue now to, you know, what are the prerequisites, what do kids need to know for these standards as we move forward? And then, you know, it's really exciting to say, okay, we're gonna tackle this. We can do this. But, you know, not only, whether it's coaching or intervention, the SEL piece is probably the most critical to start. So I'm looking forward to a bright future, despite the challenges we face this year. Oh, and now I got Joe Clark. Mr. McDevitt, I've gotta change something. Did you hit the, it says HDMI cable to large TV? Thank you, appreciate your help. Okay.
Are we ready in the booth? Okay, ready to go in the booth?
Without further ado, Mr. Clark.
Hey, 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 school committee. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. As you know, I had a previous commitment that I could not get out of, but I do greatly appreciate you allowing me to present my own data in this video format. So without any further ado, I'm gonna jump right into it. And let's get started with Franklin, and starting off with that math comparison page. And here's that slide. So as you can see, looking at the data, the map data from last year to this year, you know, we can see some dips there in both third and fourth and fifth. You know, the dips are a little more significant in third and fifth, but the starting point in fourth was a little bit lower. So it's all about recognizing those dips, especially in the math, because we're gonna see that it's more significant in the math, but especially in the math, and looking at how have we been addressing them? And how are we gonna continue to address them moving forward? And that's the name of the game. That's what we do in education all the time, is we review the data. So one thing I do want to point out here is, if you look at our fifth grade for a moment, you'll see that from the fall of this year to the winter of this year, there was actually some improvement. And that's, it's the only bar that we see that improvement in on this slide. And it's definitely noteworthy, and that's something to be proud of. Is that, you know, percentage where we want it to be, that percentile rank? No, but we're gonna continue to move forward, and it shows that we're moving in that right direction. Moving right along to our reading comparison. Now, we still see those dips in third and fifth. But again, if you've noticed on the fifth grade, from fall to winter, we see a little bit of an increase again, which is encouraging, and it's great. Fourth grade is pretty cool, because this year's data actually surpassed last year's data, both in the fall and the winter. A noteworthy thing there is the dip from fall to winter in both years, and how that is almost identical. And there's many things that we could look at there, whether it's our scope and sequence as compared to what the map data is assessing, the map assessment is assessing, and any number of things. But it's all about looking at this data, like we always do every year, that our teachers do every time they give any kind of assessment, not just the map data. But when we're looking at this data, where are we? How did we get there? And how are we gonna move forward? So we take the bars away a little bit, and now we just look at the percent of students who scored at or above grade level versus percent below grade level. And one thing that we're proud of at the Franklin School right now is that none of those numbers is below 70%. Is 70% where we want our bottom line to be? No, of course not. We want to keep moving that up. But given the state of the world right now, we're happy with that, and we can see where we can move forward. So this just breaks it down, each grade level, from the fall to the winter. We're looking at it this year only. So again, you see those dips in third and fourth, in both reading and math, but you see those slight increases in reading and math for fifth grade. So the interventions that we're putting in place, we're starting to get into it. And now that we've returned to Live Five, which everybody is so excited about, and having that consistency day in and day out of instruction, it's gonna be unbelievable, and it's gonna really help us attack that unfinished learning. All right, so then we want to talk about our highlights and our successes, right? Or highlight our successes and determine our needs. So reading in general was an overall success, right? We looked at that bar graph, we saw that, everything stayed pretty consistent. We were excited about that. When breaking it down by standard, one of the standards, informational text, is one that we were super excited about, because that's not even an easy standard. And our teachers and our students really nailed that, and they have some nice percentage numbers there, which is great. We really wanted to look at that, and we wanted to highlight that, show the hard work. But anytime we look at data, we always look at, what do we need to work on? And in this case, it's math. And I think we all knew that going into this. But when we look at those math numbers, we can see those little dips across the board. Now, when we break it down by standard, we can see that each grade level, third grade has measurement and data, and then fourth grade is geometry. So now, how do we attack this? You know, what are we doing? So now that we're back, we did this in our hybrid model when we had our synchronous days, right? When our in-person days or our synchronous Wednesdays, and we broke them into breakout rooms. Now that we're back, we're spacing out, and we're doing small groups. We're doing targeted strategy groups to make sure that we're hitting the needs of our students. Our teachers are looking at this data day in and day out. They have met with curriculum coaches consistently. They've had multiple meetings, talking about the reading data, talking about the math data, talking about, okay, let's look at our class picture as a whole. Now let's break it down. This group of students is struggling with this, and we need to help them. This student in particular has unfinished learning here, and we're targeting our instruction around those conversations, around those data-driven meetings in order to best meet their needs. And the beautiful thing is, everything spirals. And I do believe that the spiraling of our Lucy Cawkins program is what helped keep our reading afloat. The teachers were able to seamlessly weave in all of these concepts. Math, it's different. You have to build that conceptual understanding of each thing. Yes, it builds off of each other. But when you have unfinished learning at the end of a school year, because of a pandemic, and then you have a hybrid model that is getting tons of learning in, but still some unfinished learning in terms of our normal scope and sequence, that's what we have to attack. And our teachers have done a fantastic job of taking the data, looking at where the needs are, and weaving it in and out. And they're teaching their concepts while weaving in other concepts. You know, they're teaching area and perimeter and multiplication of fractions at the same time. That's what they do on a daily basis, but they're using this data to do it very systematically and targeting those students who have the most unfinished learning, and we want to make sure that we're hitting them where we can. And finally, this last slide, it's actually the data I love to look at the most. You know, you think about this year's fifth grade versus last year's fifth grade. It's two different classes. But this slide breaks it down as one group, so we can see the class of 28 and the class of 29. So the fourth grade data to the fifth grade data, and where did we go from there? How did that group of kids progress? And if we look at that first block for math, they went up, and that's great. If we look at the second block, that class went up again. So now, if we look down even a little bit farther, the numbers are all sort of going in a similar direction, right? So in third grade, this year's fourth grade, 71 in the fall, 74, oh, excuse me, 91 in the fall, 90 in the winter. And then, so as we move forward, yeah, we see these little dips down there, and that's okay. We know, we take that data and we're finding it, we're using our curriculum coaches, we're using ST math, we're using Lexia, we're using Zern, we're using all of these resources in a very systematic supplemental way, with fidelity, to make sure that we're addressing all of our students' needs. Thank you very much again. That kind of wraps me up for my data. of wraps me up for my data presentation. But if you have any questions, I know, again, I'm sorry I can't be there. Thank you so much for allowing me to do this. If any school committee members have any Franklin-specific questions, you know how to reach me, please feel free to reach out via email, and I'd be happy to address anything. I hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening, and I hope it's not too late, and I didn't go too far over my time limit. All right, everybody. Thanks a lot. Bye.
Ms. Marks, any culminating words?
Yeah, oh, yeah, back to.
Okay, yes. I just, I just want to say that all of, all of the principals, all of the teachers, all of the reading interventionists, all of the special education teachers, the teaching assistants, as, as our principals so kindly acknowledged, our coaches, everybody is working very hard. We have a very strong team of people. I think we have some good ideas and some good plans to put into motion. I'm excited about what the future holds. So, and I think that, I think we have the right people in place to, to have some really great things happen. So thank you all very much.
And committee members, any, any last words you want to share before these folks go off for their evening? Ms. Maitzlinch?
No, thank you.
Ms. Pytronski?
No, thank you. Just thank you for all the work that you're doing. We know you're working hard, and you're awesome.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yep, just a couple of quick points. One, I'm very, the data is great, and thank you very much for your time tonight, and the preparation that went into this, and seeing what's here. I, I think one of the things that is starting to concern me, and really jumped out, is I'm starting to already think about that fifth to sixth grade transition, right? And, and that's a very significant, because we're taking students from each of these different elementary schools, putting them into the middle school, basically scrambling them, and, you know, these students are going to be there. And so, when I look and I just compare, and I know Mr. Clark isn't here, but when I look at math, for example, at Franklin, you know, 78% of those students are above grade level, and then I compare that to Atkinson, that's 58. That's a 20-point difference. When I look at reading, it's 88% at Franklin that are, excuse me, at grade level, 59 at Atkinson, 29-point difference. No other school is below 70. So I'm very worried about these students from Atkinson kind of getting into the middle school, being dispersed among other students. And I think it really drives home the point that I tried to make earlier, that Mrs. Olafland and the Atkinson School need help and assistance now. It's, it's not a, hey, what can we do next year? What can we do to really support those teachers, the staff, and most importantly, the students today? I think that that's going to be critical, because if not, they're going to get lost in middle school. So that's one point. But my second is, you know, I do think there are some pockets of good here as well. And I think a lot of, you know, looking at the numbers really kind of hid that a little bit, right? So, you know, there are some places where, you know, yes, there were declines in where we were, but when we started off in the fall of 2020 to where we are today, we saw definite increases in some of our grades, right? And I think that that really, I mean, in the, in a pandemic, for students who are in school two days a week, teachers who are working incredibly hard, I think, you know, we need to acknowledge that. Because I think it's really important to the staff, and I think it's really important to the parents who supported these students, and the students who really worked in an environment that, to be honest, none of them ever asked for. So, you know, I, I think we should celebrate some of that, but still recognize that we have opportunities to go from there. And I'm really excited, you know, that we are back five days a week now. I think that, you know, so many people have talked about the social emotional learning and the impact that that is, and how that is going to help our students and, and, you know, when they're together and they're learning and, and they're just, they're just in school. I, I really hope that these test results, you know, start to come up, and, and I'm excited for those. So those are my three points.
Mabley?
Yes. So one thing, actually, I forgot to say earlier to Ms. Olafland, I wanted to, from the presentation a few weeks ago, that got cut off, you know, changed a little bit. I, I never got to tell you the teacher who talked about how she go, went down to where the unfinished learning from the spring, and she brought it into her class. She mentioned how she was doing that, and I'm sure all the teachers across the district are. But I really wanted to appreciate that, because I thought that that was helpful for people to hear that, you know, went back and looked at what was lost in the spring and tried to, you know, ramp things up with that. So if you could pass that along, I really appreciated that presentation. I know you're all doing that sort of thing. My only, my second comment kind of sounds like Mr. McDevitt was hitting on that a little bit, which is, you know, kids are back in school five days, which we all are happy about, and that's going to make a massive difference on some of this sort of thing. But part of me, I also, and you know, this would be very unpopular, I'm going to get some hate mail, but part of me wishes that from now until the end of the year, we could just, especially in elementary school, just play and do group activities and become friends again. And, and I, I think that, that all of this is setting up for the fall. This is our opportunity for kids to remember what it means to be in school, and to be a teammate, and to line up for lunch, and wash their hands, all those things. And I know you're doing all of that, and you're trying to, you know, make correction, recorrect things with kids here. So I, I know it's a ton, that to me, the most important thing is these kids have to be excited about, and it sounds like you've all given good anecdotes, excited to come back, excited to be with each other, and learn how to be teammates and, and in the classroom together. So thank you for all this, and I'm thrilled that we're back.
Thank you, Ms. Mabley. Thank you, all the members. I don't, I don't have anything to add at this point. Ms. Marks, is there anything you wanted to say about wrapping up?
I don't, I don't think a lot. I think we did touch on the, the whole SEL piece, and I think in a prior meeting, we also talked about the fact that we anticipate seeing an increase in SEL needs when we come back into school full-time. And I will just say, we have already begun to see that. I, I'm sure each of these individual elementary principals can speak to cases. Dr. Gilligan and I met with our nursing director today and talked about some cases. So what Mrs. Mabley was saying in terms of just letting kids get back, you know, remember how it is to be with one another, there, there, everyone is going to have a lot on their plate in the next few weeks until the, till the summer break. And I think that it isn't going to be, for all children at all times, a complete focus on, you know, what did they miss in math, or what are they missing in reading? Because there, there are a lot of students that are coming back in and have either held it together, or we didn't know about the struggles that they were having when they were home a couple of days a week. But we do know now. And again, I, I just want to commend the principals. I know I've had conversations with a couple of you just this week about situations that have been going on, and it's, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot. So just to kind of piggyback on what Mrs. Mabley was saying, that's, that's another whole big piece of what's, what's happening everywhere right now. So.
Thank you. And it, it does sound like we're going to need to have some, you know, vertical alignment, professional development between those fifth grade teachers and those sixth grade teachers. I know that there are great benefits to heterogeneous grouping at the, at the middle school. But it's a year like not, you know, and, and so I'm sure that they're going to need to hear more from the elementary up to the middle. So thank you very, very much. It seems like we're at the beginning of our agenda still. But, but frankly, we've really done the, the meat of the, of the business here. Thank you all very much for coming for a second time. Thank your teachers for, you know, all they're doing. And again, welcome to stay, but you are also welcome to leave, and we thank you so much for all you're doing with kids every day.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. And Helen, thank you for reminding me, we're still in the superintendent's report.
Me and Dr. Gilligan, I was going to say, do you have anything else?
No.
For us, the superintendent's report?
I'd probably go on and on, but, you know, there, all kids face different challenges, and everyone has unique needs, and, and, you know, this is not something new. We've seen this across the district, and we're going to continue to work each and every day to meet those needs, today and going forward.
All right. So the chair's report, very short. Thank you all for your work last meeting. I'm very excited about the high school schedule. I'm very excited about the launch of the, the subcommittee survey. So those are all great things. Thank you for that work. Ms. Mabley, do you want to make a plug for Ed Hall of Fame?
I would be happy to, Ms. Picard. We, our education Hall of Fame, we have some, we have received a couple of applications, but we are open until April 30th for more, and for anyone who would like to nominate someone who is in teacher, administrator, anything who's been retired for, I think, at least five years, spent most of their career here in North Andover. We would love to have you submit that by April 30th. The form is on our school committee page, and I'm very excited to reflect on and honor the, the work of, of people who have built up this district over the, the past. So it's open till the 30th.
Thank you very much. And if, if folks, you know, get that process started, but don't know, you know, it requires a supervisor's recommendation and some other things, if you can get it started, we can work with HR to see if we can help bring it to the finish line as well. April 28th is our community chat at nine in the morning. It's a Wednesday. And I know I'm available, and Ms. Mabley's available for that. I hadn't heard from any other members, but if anybody would like to take the place either of myself or Ms. Mabley on April 28th, at nine o'clock for the community chat, you can just let me know. Also upcoming, we're starting to think about dates and topics for our summer retreat. That's usually our, like, four-hour to six-hour meeting that we have sometime in July. If you have times in summer that you know you will not be available, if you have trips planned or surgeries planned, or, you know, just sitting in your backyard without answering emails for a while planned, let me know so that we can start to schedule that date. And if you have topics that you want us to, to include, or trainings that you want us to have as a committee, let me know, and we'll start to get that ball rolling a little bit, because it will be summer in about 10 minutes. That's all in the chair's report. So we have no old business whatsoever, and we're on to new business, and that is the town warrant. So Dr. Gilligan, you have that you can put up for us, yes?
Yeah, this is where I usually turn it over to Dr. Mealy.
I know.
This is an easy one here, so let me get to this. I'm back to the tab here. And I'm going to go to the agenda. Great. All right, everyone can see that, okay?
No, it didn't present, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Oh, it's still spinning. I see it.
Dr. Gilligan, would you like me to do that?
Sure.
All right. So you stop presenting, and I'll start presenting.
Okay, thank you. I think I have too many tabs open right now. They have continued to grow here. Thanks, Helen. All right, this is what we do every year. These are the regular, typical things that we have on the town warrant for, for action. And it's, this is the first read. We'll come back, but it's school committee recommendations. You know, this is one that's on every year, authorization to town manager superintendent regarding contracts in excess of three years, authorization to accept grants of easements. So the town will vote to authorize the select board and the school committee to accept grants of easements for access water drainage, all the typical work that goes on. And more of it will be going on moving forward, hopefully, and facilities master plan, too. And Article Four is authorized, oh, continue here, to authorization to grant easements. That looks like the select board. And I believe, last but not least, I think it's Article 24, and that's transfer funds from free cash from fiscal year 21 to the school department revolving account. And it would be $148,551.97 from free cash to the school department revolving account. And that's the money that's typically set aside as the mechanism through Medicaid for the money that we spend. And, you know, originally, they thought they could just send it to us, but we had to go through the proper channels to do so.
Can I ask a couple of quick questions?
Yep.
So Article Two, which is to have contracts longer than three years, excluding personnel, do we have any existing contracts today longer than that? I'm thinking perhaps busing? I think we've done like a three-year with an option for a fourth or something, but I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's a great question on the busing one. I can, I'll check and know, I'll find out, Mr. McDevitt.
Okay. And then Articles Three, I guess it's Three and Four, which have to do with easements. Is this, is there an end to this? Or is this like, we vote today, and in 60 years, they're going, hey, that crew back in 2021 voted?
No, I think that these easements piece, I, I'll have to double-check with Dr. Mealy. I spoke with him about these. He said these are the ones that we typically do each year. So I can certainly find out on that in terms of.
It just doesn't have an end date in there, so that's why I was, okay.
They, they generally, my recollection, Andrew, is that they don't have an end date. So I have an easement for water and electricity on my driveway from my neighbors, and they can't suddenly say, oh, no, never mind, Ms. Picard, you can no longer have water at your house. So once an easement is granted, then it needs to be accepted. I think it's a two-part process, and then it's forever.
The easement's forever, but the, the ability to authorize the committee and the select board.
Oh, no, yeah, that's, we do that every year.
Yeah, this is the one we do every year.
We do that every year.
Okay, all right.
We do that every year.
I couldn't have that either, actually.
All right.
Do other members have questions about these four that we need to prepare before we vote next time we get together? Ms. Lynch?
No questions.
Ms. Pytronski?
No.
Ms. M, Ms. Mabley?
No, thank you.
Okay. And thank you for the explanation on the, on the free cash, because I was, I had forgotten what we were doing exactly there. And I know that there's often special and stabilization funds that need to be transferred. Will that be another article that will be part of town meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I think typically, we come back with that. I'll, I'll double-check with Dr. Mealy. But typically, we, if we have any transfer over, it's on there, so.
Well, that's a special term meeting, I feel like.
Special town, yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right. So we will talk about that again next time. And so we're on to our last. And if people have questions between now and next time, Dr. Mealy will be back next week, and we can ask him our questions before we, before we gather again. So then we have the revolving accounts. So I've got that up on the screen now. Dr. Gilligan, do you want to speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, so, let me pull this up. All right. So as you see here, FY21 revolving account budget adjustment. So as you can see in the cover page, the activity in the food service revolving account for 21 has been much higher. And it's really is a result of, you guys know the work Erica Murphy's done this year to feed everybody. I mean, it's been incredible, the amount that's gone above and beyond to serve the community during the pandemic. So they're federally reimbursed, so while the expenses have been higher than anticipated, the revenues have increased in quarterly. So the current end of the year balance for this account is projected to be over $400,000. Even with these additional expenses, we are requesting an increase to the supplies and equipment line of $150,000 for each line. So this is really a first read. You know, recommend approving the revolving account budget adjustment for the food services, really as a result of morning, noon, and night, the work they've done this year.
And just to clarify, Dr. Gilligan, the food services revolving account, those funds have to stay within food services. So any funds we take in for food services have to be used for food services, whether it's purchasing equipment or purchasing materials or whatever we might need, right? We can't take that money and then use it for teachers or for.
Exactly. Just typically, like everything else in, in the budget. You couldn't take the food services revolving account money and, you know, do a, paint a few classrooms over the summer, you know, that's totally different.
Okay. So any questions? Ms. Maitzlinch?
No questions.
Ms. Pytronski?
No.
Mr. McDevitt?
No impact on staffing, correct?
I don't believe so at this time.
Because it just says supply. Because it's just the supplies and then equipment, but I, I would think we would have additional staff with all the preparation, so.
Yeah, I think that, you know, and I'll, I'll double-check with Jim, but if we had additional sta, if we added additional staff, you know, that's ongoing.
Okay.
So...
My, my understanding was that these two line items were the only ones that needed a...
Increase?
A higher, an increase in the balance allowed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Mabley?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any questions right now. So, um, that's it. See, so after, after it looked like we were only halfway through, we were really, you know, almost to the end. So we, we have our go-around, so if any members want to share anything about what they've been doing in the last couple of weeks since we were last together, we could share that now. Ms. Vitschelich?
Not a comment about what I've been doing, but just a congratulations to the track teams for the outstanding season that they had.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Petrowski?
Um, I don't really have anything to share, sorry.
That's, you don't have to. It's just if you have something and you want to, you can. Let me stop sharing, because we're not talking about that anymore. And Mr. McDevitt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Mabley?
Uh, just one quick thing, is I actually enjoyed a tour of the in-process massive renovation that's been going on at the trustees property at Stevens Coolidge Place yesterday, and for people who are looking for summer camps or ideas for their students this summer, they're going to be having a massive amount of programming from now and going forward. Huge changes going on there. My, my family and I have visited that place for all the years we've lived here. It's unbelievable, the transformation that's going on, and there's going to be, you know, all kinds of opportunities for family and kids to, to get involved in programs. So keep our eyes open there, and I think there will be opportunities actually for our schools to be able to engage with programs, that they're, they're hiring and having placed new staff to actually do a lot there. So, um, very exciting resource in our town that's getting even more spectacular. So I encourage you to check it out.
Thank you, Ms. Mabley. And I just want to share again, I was able to take the second session of the Hidden Histories with Essex Heritage that Brian Sheehy has put together with the impetus of our North Andover high school students asking for more information. This one was on the struggle for liberty, equality, property, and explaining the resistance to exclusionary policies against black people in Essex County. And they used materials from North Parish Church that have been shared with this committee and have been shared with our, our schools. So I'm really thankful for that, that learning. I was thankful for the dinner music I had with the choir concerts the last couple of nights. I had them on my, um, on my table with our, with our dinner. I wanted to let the committee know that the Cress Collaborative passed its budget and renewed the executive director and negotiated a contract with her, and I already mentioned the interact. So thank you all for the work you're doing in community, and if you, um, have any thoughts on retreat dates, that would be helpful for me to have as well. So I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn the meeting for April 15th, 2021.
I'll second that.
So moved by Ms. Mabley, seconded by Mr. McDevitt at 9:34. If there's no discussion, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Vitschelich.
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's 5-0 to adjourn on 4/15/2021 at 9:35 PM. Thank you all.